Yeah, you could leave it in my office.
And we're going.
Morning, everyone. The chair is going to call this meeting and the Florida Commissioners to order. The we'd like to welcome our new county commissioner, the sworn this morning, Wesley Feliciano. Congratulations, Wesley.
Thank you, George.
And item three is to improvements of October ninth and four eight. Chair is going to withdraw that item simply because Commissioner Feliciano was not here for those meetings. So we'll push them off until the next meeting. Okay? All right. I enforce authorize and sign a CDBG grant of $25,000.
Well, the only thing I need is the clerk's signature this morning. Is he not?
He's not. Yeah, I'm sorry. For the record, Commissioner Levitt is absent due to a medical situation.
Oh, okay.
I'll reach him and I'm sure he'll start.
No, he can come by later on.
It's not his medical situation.
No, it's not his medical situation.
He's assisting. He's assisting someone who's who's Quayle.
Who's Quayle.
Okay, sorry to hear that.
Yeah, so he will be back in town by noon time or twelve.
If it's something he can stop by and take care of, because everything's treated.
He asked for your phone if we needed.
Yeah, hate to bother.
No, that's okay. That's fine. He'll be fine. He's coming back. He's expecting a call from me later anyway. So what this grants on the?
It's the $25,000 mapping for housing.
Oh, the map for housing that we had for the same annual.
Yeah, yeah, that's correct.
It's the actual document.
Okay.
And you, back in July, when we applied, you would authorize Ray to sign. So Gray's all set.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Item five is an update on the CDBG funding for the warming center. So we have Donna laying out there, I see.
We have Donna and I believe we have Molly.
We have Molly there. Hi, Donna. And there's Molly. You guys looking?
Hi, everybody.
Hi, all.
Okay. So I appreciate you guys joining us this morning on Zoom. Trying to understand a little bit better feel about what might be available for CDBG funding as it relates to the construction, well, operation of the rooms. We're planning on operating at county operates now. But we need to say. Maybe you guys can talk about that. It'll wow us a second. But all the rules are changes.
Yeah, sure. I'm happy to talk a little bit about just a quick overview of the CDBG program and how it can be used. And feel free, Donna. Donna has a lot of on the ground experience with the many grants she's administered over the years. So she could definitely speak to anything I might miss. So I think most of you are familiar with the CDBG program, having just that $25,000 planning grant that you just mentioned right before this, that you guys are supporting for Stratford County CAP and St. Anson College for their their housing program. So the CDBG program is federal funds. It comes from the Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD. And the program is broken up into two different programs at the federal level. There is a state program and there is an CDBG entitlement program. And how the funding actually gets divvied out at the national level is 70% of all of the CDBG funds nationwide go to entitlement communities and 30% goes to state CDBG programs. In New Hampshire, we're a little bit different than some of the more urban areas because obviously our state is mostly rural. So in New Hampshire, we have five communities that are HUD entitlement communities. And they receive their own CDBG allocation from HUD each year. And then the state allocation on behalf of the state of New Hampshire comes to CDFA to administer. The program, the CDBG program is intended to support projects that benefit predominantly low to moderate income individuals. HUD defines that as 80% of the area median income or less. So all the projects that are supported by the state programs support that population. There's a variety of different types of programs that can be supported. HUD prescribes what that can be. There's a list of eligible activities that they give. And then the state takes that big list and prioritizes different activities under that and focuses what the state funds will be used on. In New Hampshire, it's things like supporting affordable housing. And it's also public facilities projects, things like water and sewer infrastructure that benefits residential areas that are predominantly low income. And then also sometimes funding can be used for infrastructure support of facilities where social services are provided that benefit low to moderate income individuals. So we don't provide funding for the operations of those things. But if there's like buildings that need repair or things like that for nonprofit childcare centers, food pantries, homeless services, we can, CDBG funds can typically be used for that. And then there's other funding as well out there for economic development activities. So that's at a high level, kind of what the the program is, is a recap for you all. And then I understand that this project is that you guys are have before you is a is it a facility for individuals experiencing homelessness? Is that correct?
It's correct.
Okay, and it's going to be new construction? It's it's not it's not an existing building. It needs to be built?
Right, it would be new construction on the county complex.
Okay, and that's in Dover, right?
It's in Dover, yeah. Although the county is, the county land is, it's housed in Dover, but it's county operation, so.
Sure.
So I I was told that maybe because the county land is physically in the boundary of Dover that that might have a problem with as it relates to the entitlement community because Dover being the dominant community.
Yeah, that's correct. So of the five, there's only five entitlement communities. But unfortunately, two of them are located in Stratford County. Rochester and Dover are both HUD entitlement communities, as is Portsmouth in your region. And so the federal regulations really stipulate that typically state funds cannot be used for projects located in entitlement communities. And furthermore, the regulation says that that entitlement jurisdictions may only receive incidental benefit from a state CDBG funded activity. So it's kind of a two part thing where it's both, you know, the location, but also the entitlement jurisdiction benefit, if you will, for, you know, provide for the funding. Being Dover and Rochester, obviously, I think both have populations now that would likely be housed in this proposed facility. And so it's it's we say 70% of the beneficiaries must be from non entitlement communities. So again, a majority of the of the proposed beneficiaries of the project must be from non entitlement communities. So it's kind of twofold. It's like it's well, it's because it's where it's located, but then also that 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 benefit to the jurisdictions.
Okay, so talk to me about the CDFA. Is that a competitive? The state, the CDFA funds that the state has, how does that?
Yeah, that's a good question. So I'll speak specifically to the public facilities program, which this type of activity would fall under. But it is also true for our housing program. We have competitive grant rounds twice per year. And projects who eligible projects can apply for funds typically up to $500,000. So for public facilities projects, the maximum you could request is $500,000. And it's competitive. There's a scoring matrix that we publish in our application and program guide. And applications are ranked based on their score. And then we're able to fund as many projects as we have funding available. Typically, in any public facilities round, we have approximately 1.3 to 1.4 million dollars just based on the annual allocation alone to award. So that's, you know, two to three projects if they're all requesting that $500,000 maximum award amount. And I'll just state, oh, go ahead.
I'm no, I'm sorry, Molly. Go ahead. I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, no, and I was just going to say, and even it's actually less than $500,000. It typically is available to the projects to actually carry out the project activities because we require grantees, in this case, the county, to hire a grant administrator to help administer those funds because there's a whole slew of federal compliance that comes along with taking the HUD funds. And so usually there's, you know, I'd say, and Donna can correct me if I'm wrong, but like 470 or less available to the project, to the the county in this case, to actually do a project. Because some of that, the funds to pay for that grant administration can come off the top of the grant. So just trying to give you an idea of, you know, kind of how much is typically available.
Molly, I think that they are asking, I don't think they realize the term, but I think they're asking about the tax credit program now because that's what mostly CDFA is associated with when you don't say CDBG. And now we know that CDBG can't be used in Dover. So I think they might be asking about the tax credit program. Can you explain that one to them a little bit and see if they're eligible for that at all?
Yeah, that's a great question. So our other kind of flagship program, if you will, that CDFA is known for is the state tax credit program. And that program, that those funds come from the state legislature. We get $5 million per year to award in state tax credits. How that works is nonprofit or municipal or county applicants in this case can apply for projects, for funding for projects that benefit the community in some way. And it's a pretty broad definition of what that is. And if the project is awarded funding, then they it's in the form of tax credits, which they the the recipient goes out and sells to local businesses. And essentially what happens is local businesses make a donation to the project. So in this case, you know, a homeless service facility, they say the local car dealership wanted to make a donation to that. They would make a donation, send it into CDFA. A little bit gets taken off for administration. But what happens is that counts, they get credits off their state business taxes. So off of their, you know, business profits tax and other, so it's an incentive for businesses to invest in local projects and that would benefit them on their state taxes. And there could also be, you know, the the opportunity for them to get federal benefits by making a charitable donation as well. But this is just strictly regarding state state tax.
So so. Help me with this.
Yeah.
If we did, if the county was involved in a public private partnership with the private sector, say to construct, say a transitional housing program as an example. Would the would the? Does the private sector have to own the the project specifically? So say, say as an example, say if the county donated some land, okay? And we donate the land with the idea of creating transitional housing. And had the private sector run it, or say the local housing authority just manage it for the private sector? How would those tax credits work in that? Would that would they be eligible for that tax credit?
Yes, as long as they were a nonprofit entity, which likely, you know, providing this type of service would be, I think, very likely. They sort of say it was, you know, the local nonprofit homeless service provider that would come and step in and add traditional housing to their, you know, to their services they offer. They could apply and as long as it shows a, you know, either own the land if you if the county were to make a donation of the of the land or if they have a lease on that, like a long term, you know, ground lease or something like that, that's fine as well. As long as, you know, they have site control and, you know, are able to 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 establish that with us.
So is that a is that a competitive grant or is that tax?
That is also a competitive, that is competitive as well. And there's only, we only have one round of that per year. So applications are due in March and award decisions are made in June of each year. And it's a variety of amounts of award, but again, we only have $5 million to award. So it, you know, it stretches from smaller awards to, you know, slightly bigger amounts around that $500,000 mark. But, you know, it could go a little higher sometimes.
Has historically the the fund been depleted?
Yes. Yeah, we it's heavily subscribed. In fact, we went to the state legislature this year to request additional funds. But obviously, in this difficult funding climate, we they were, there was broad support, bipartisan support. But it just wasn't able to, we weren't able to receive more funds for that. But it is in fact a very popular program.
Okay. So.
Molly, when you say very popular, like do approximately half of the?
I think that's correct. Again, I don't work, I work on the CDBG program, not directly on the tax credit program. But I do think it's roughly half of the projects that apply are awarded funding and half are unfortunately not.
And maybe we could get them a list of consultants for the tax credit program so they could at least talk to somebody who, I mean, I can't help them with tax credits. I don't do that. But somebody else who definitely knows the tax program better and to tell them, like, maybe they don't have a good chance. Maybe they do have a good chance or stuff like that.
Yeah, I think that would be in the best interest if that's something, if you're, you know, having conversations with potential entities to to do this project. It would be good to, you know, connect with CDFA staff or consultants that help with these applications and, you know, outline the the type of the project. And then they could give you an idea of where those type of projects are that or might, you know, fall in the scoring.
Oh, believe it. Wow. All right, well, the world, oh my gosh, Commissioner Levitt just joined us, so. I think I was going to say the news, I know. That's okay. You all good?
I'm good.
Okay. So. So in terms of the shelter, the warming center, we're not, we're not, we're not entitled to the CDBG money for for capital. Because probably the majority, or at least half the people we would be serving there are from Dover and Rochester, in terms of the homelessness. So setting that aside, the this this the CDFA, is this the fund that at present, the Stratford County CAP is pursuing as it relates to the the shelter in Rochester? I was told that they were looking to.
That's a good question as well. So CDFA did receive some additional CDBG funds related to the pandemic. So under the CARES Act, we received some additional CDBG CV funds, they're called for for COVID. And we have made those funds available and various funding opportunities, you know, since the pandemic. We have a little bit of funds remaining and they have to be expended by next summer. And so what CDFA is doing, based on the need that we've heard across the state, is we are making some of those CDBG CV funds available and around that's open right now with applications due December 1st to support projects that benefit individuals that are homeless or experiencing housing instability. And the types of activities that can be funded with this COVID funds are actually operating costs and services. Traditionally, with our statewide allocation that we get on an annual basis, we do not focus on operating support or, you know, that type of services. It's more the brick and mortar infrastructure. But with the COVID funds, we did run around back in 2020. So this is our second round with this funds where we're focusing on providing funding because obviously we can do that tieback to the pandemic because the the population of unhoused individuals remains high, you know. And we can have that through line back to the cause, you know, being the pandemic. So anyways, we have that funding available and that's the opportunity that you're referring to. And the other unique thing about those funds is it is available to entitlement communities. So the way that that was distributed is different than the the normal statewide allocations for the state CDBG program. It was special because of COVID. And so as a state, even though we're the ones that are administering it, entitlement communities are eligible. So that's why the we I have been in conversation with those folks about that the shelter and potentially applying for funds for that.
But that's operating existing.
Correct. And the funds have to be expended by next June. So it's a because that's there's a federal expenditure deadline on the COVID funds and that's next summer. So it's a it's a very specific and quick moving funding opportunity. So that's why it's best, it's it needs to be used by existing shelters that are needing help with funding in the springtime.
And no construction, just operation.
No construction, just operation. So we're operating a warming center at present. And I certainly don't want to step on anything that CAP might be pursuing here in the county. Because there is a definite housing need, well, across the region and across the country. But specifically the operating money that might be available, is there, is that fund? You said there might be some, there's some money left over that has to be spent by next year. Would and could the county apply for some of that operating money? Would that hurt CAP's application if we did so?
The county could apply. It's open to any applicant and it would not necessarily hurt. It's just going to be, we are finishing up the scoring criteria that we'll be we'll be making available within the next few weeks. And it will just be, you know, it's going to be, we expect it to be a competitive round. So it will just add more applications into the mix for that that amount of money. I think we have about $850,000 available to award. And so we'll only be likely making a handful of awards with those funds.
George, you say the word warming and then you say homeless. Those are two different things. Like a warming shelter is where you go if it's really, really cold and your house can't heat up or something like that. You're not homeless for some of these warming shelters. A warming shelter could be, you know, something for the winter, hiding, you know, hiding from the weather in the winter. And then a homeless shelter is a different thing. So I, can you tell us what it is that you are currently operating so that we can even see?
Right, what we're operating right now is a is a warming center. That's what we call it. Now, maybe the it's the wrong terminology and we can correct it if we have to. But what happens is is those homeless, those people who are homeless who are living in tents and living on the streets during, you know, inclement weather, mostly during the winter, we are, we are, the county is acting in a fiduciary capacity on behalf of all three municipalities to administer the contract to a private vendor who operates the facility during inclement weather. So that's how the, that's how it's structured at present, okay? The long term plan is to construct a warming center, a warming center here on county property. And it would be open under the same, under the same dynamics. It would be open during inclement weather for those who are unhoused. Again, living on the streets or living in tents or living in the woods. So that's what we're doing at present.
So they're sleeping. There are, you know, they are able to spend the night at these at the?
That's correct.
Okay.
To spend the night and we try to provide them some laundry services and some healthcare while they're there. And so that's what that's that's what that's what we're talking about.
What is that on your county property in Dover? I'm sorry if I missed it.
No, no, the facilities in Summersworth at present, but it will, the new facility we're building hopefully will be on county property.
I see.
The building you're using right now is for emergency use only. It doesn't codes. It's housed in Summersworth. It's called the Willamette Warming Center. Dover bought that building with the use of some COVID money, some federal money that was available to assist the unhoused. The plan is to sell that building, take the proceeds from that building and invest in the in the new building. They'll be built here on the county complex. But we still have operational expenses that we're that the municipalities are dealing with. One of the, one of the municipalities is not in that city of Summersworth.
Summersworth is not, right?
So that's the, that's what we're, that's what we're seeing. So I'm just wondering if we could apply for that that operational, some of that operational money.
Yeah, you would be, you would be eligible to apply for those funds. There's the application deadline is coming up real quick on December 1st. And there, as you guys know, because you've just gone through that with the planning grant, you know, there has to be those public hearings on top of doing that app, getting the application ready to submit. So I would say you guys would need to make a decision quickly and see if that could fit within your, the the next meeting is coming up.
Okay.
George, who's operating it for you?
Who's operating? We have a vendor, the same vendor that's operating the home center in Manchester.
Is it families in transition?
What's that?
Is it families in transition?
It's ever. Evolutions, evolution. Yeah, evolution, leadership, right.
E C.
Yeah, E C, yeah, E C L E. They have a long name for themselves. But we 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 had asked them to operate our facility over the last, last year. And the powers to be here, the mayors and city managers of welfare director, were very happy with the operation. So we continued that based on their recommendation. Even though the county is acting in a fiduciary capacity, I meet with the mayors and city managers to discuss, you know, any issues that come up. So but the point is that the municipalities are supporting that.
Yeah.
And if there is any kind of relief we could get for that, I would be interested in pursuing that. Now, the question is, Donna, can you, are you capable of helping us write that grant or not? How's that? If we were to do that?
Yeah. Yeah. Oh, we need like Molly said, we got to do it fast and furious. Fortunately, the county is very good at public hearings, like they could pull a public hearing together. Municipalities that are bigger, like cities, have double readings and they take considerable time to have a public hearing. The county could put one together at the end of November for this. But we'd need to talk to, you know, your operating group and see if this is eligible for, you know, they have to tie it back and Molly could go into more detail, but it all has to be tied back to COVID because it's COVID money. So we need to talk about that a little bit more to find out if that would even work. So we need to talk to them and we need to have a pre-con, pre-application meeting to see if it would be eligible and to see if they even want, I mean, how much, like most of these people, I think, I don't know this, Molly's on the inside there. I'm just guessing, are looking for like $100,000 or something like that for operating costs, but tying it back to COVID.
Right, we would probably be looking for somewhere between $100,000, $150,000 in that range. Again, we'd have to flush this out a little bit. But we can hold, county commissioners can hold, you know, public hearings with, you know, very minimal notice. We don't have a huge bureaucracy here. We just do what we have to do and get it done.
Well, Molly has a little bit more tightness on that, but we need a couple of weeks' notice.
Yeah, we do. But Donna could walk you through that if.
But we could do the end of November, whatever your meaning is, the end of November. We could do that. So we need to figure out how this group could tie this back and provide the information that's needed for this application.
But that's the key thing. And then just to make sure there's not other federal funds being supplanted, you know, with using. Okay, so those are kind of the two big things that we that, you know, you need to do because it's the COVID funds.
Well, maybe we should ask that question about the ARPA money.
Yeah, we we're receiving some ARPA money for its operation.
We're receiving exactly $100,000 this season from the state.
Right, but it's ARPA money, right?
Yeah.
Those funds would be in addition to that, right? Like that you need that whole amount to operate in this way and you need.
Right, it just, it's just.
Yeah, because that only covers a portion of.
Diane, when you say a portion, like what percentage of a portion?
About a third.
A third.
A third, right?
No double dipping is what Molly's saying, you know, you can't be getting money and making money and stuff like that. So we have to be real clear about that. But if that's, if that, that's the only money that they're getting other than getting money from the communities?
That's correct. The amount of our contract at present is $250,000. So $100,000 coming from ARPA, the other $150,000 plus, which is not, we've got it, we're tracking it, plus in-kind services for one municipality for ambulance services, first responders, police, those types of things. Those are, those are in-kind services being provided by Summersworth, who's the host community. So but we are tracking those expenses, those additional expenses. So.
Yeah, I mean, I think it would be worth, if that's something that you guys are interested in having a follow up conversation with Donna first and the provider to, you know, look at that. Again, it would have to be specifically for the period of next spring because the applications are due December 1st and then there's a couple of months of, you know, review and the contracts have to go through governor and council for any projects that are awarded. So it would be for, you know, services being provided in the late winter into the spring of next year. So that would help um you got determined to what the, you know, request of funding would be, because you'd be looking at, you know, proportional to that amount of time.
Yeah, that, well, that makes sense based on what our, the, the ARPA draw that we have and that, that would, that would all align. Because we operate the center until about mid-April.
Okay.
But, but, but the plan is to construct a new facility that, that we would be moving into by next fall. Okay? So it's, it's a continuation. There's no drop, well, a lack of a better term, really dropping services during the, the warm weather in, in the summer. Because the homeless go back out on the streets. So uh, that's the reason why I was asking you about the transitional portion.
Yeah. And then, and the other thing I just, I don't think I explicitly said too, is it would definitely be worth a conversation with um for the facility, the long-term facility that you're looking to build. Um, to look at Rochester and Dover and their C D B G allocation and how they're currently spending that. And see if there's a way, um, you know, they don't get a, a lot of C D B G funds on an annual basis. And I'm not quite sure um how the, what kind of types of projects they're using to fund with that. But that would certainly be a conversation with them as well um for their regular annual allocation. Maybe some of that funds could go towards that longer-term project.
So you could use that instead of your tax. Right. So the, can I just ask one other question? I don't mind if you leave it this, but I, I, there's a lot of information here that I, I want to get on record from, at least from our end. Years ago, in the C D B G uh program, we used to be able to, and this goes back to the Carter administration, so I'm dating myself, okay? So um, we used to be able to use that money uh to offset bonding costs for low and mod infrastructure. Uh, now, is that still the case? Like, well, so let me explain what I'm talking about. Say a community, say a community receives two hundred thousand dollars in entitlement funds. Municipality does an infrastructure improvement where they're gonna spend two million dollars. And they would take a portion of the two hundred thousand to help pay off the bond. Now, we used to be able to do that back in the old renewal days. I don't know whether they can still do that. That's what I'm asking. You understand?
That's not something we've um, we're doing with the state C D B G program. I don't know, Donnie, you've been around a little bit longer than I am. Do you, I have, do you?
Well, C D B G could help in an infrastructure project if it's in a low and moderate income neighborhood. But again, not in one of your entitlements, okay? Unless you're going through your Rochester, Dover, whatever. But with Molly's money, it would be in another town outside of the entitlements. They could contribute to a project, not, I, I think maybe you guys think of it as paying off a bond. But C D B G was more putting in some money into the project. But I want to tell you, these days, uh, it's a really important thing to me these days is to keep C D B G out of these pricey projects. Because C D B G now has Baba, you know, it always has Davis Bacon. But it is, if you're doing uh over five million dollar project, I say, make sure we're not costing you more money than you're getting from C D B G. Because it, that's what's happening, that we're finding on these pricier projects. The C D B G is gonna cost them more than it's worth.
Right.
And then on top of that cost wiping itself out, you also limit all your contractors. Because who wants to work on one of these federal projects if they could take another job? Because right now it's, you know, feast for contractors. They get choices. It's not like the old days where they had to take all our rules and regulations because they needed the work. So on those kinds of projects, I'd be real careful to see what the impact of the C D B G. Because remember, C D B G goes into a project and it may be a five million dollar project, but it contaminates the entire project. You can't pick out and say, oh, I'm just gonna do the service lines. I'm not gonna do the main lines. It, once it touches anything, everything is subject to C D B G.
Got you into their roles. I got you. Okay. Well, Ray, you have any?
I think we're gonna leave that where we need to talk to the um provider, the ever whatever there. Provider to see if this would be eligible. We gotta do it real fast. Maybe Diane and I could set something up and do that pretty quick and see, because we're on a little bit of schedule here.
Okay, yeah, well, 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 uh, Diane's nodding her head at me. She's writing, writing down copious notes here. So um, I appreciate your time uh this morning and, and trying to navigate such a uh, all these silos in the federal government and, and, you know, has any of that been affected right now as a result of the shutdown? And what do you, what do you, have you gearing anything out of Washington that would affect this funding stream in the future? I don't like to put people through a lot of effort if we think it's just gonna go away. I did, you know.
Molly has to be diplomatic with what she says. I say, I'm on the outside, so I can say I'm apprehensive about the future. Um, she has the money obligated now for this January round and she has that C V money. She already has that obligated. Um, the future I'd be a little worried about because we're not sure what's, I don't think we're sure what's gonna happen. Molly will be more diplomatic about the whole thing, but I'd be concerned about it.
Yeah, I mean, it was zeroed out. C D B G was zeroed out in the um administration's um budget. Um, but the Senate and the House have, um, I do have funds in their twenty twenty-six budget. Um, so we're just waiting to see um, you know, where that will, it will land for future funding. Um, luckily, you know, we're still able to access the funds we have. There was some concern um because we do have to draw down from treasury. Um, we don't, the funds don't live here in New Hampshire. C D F A has to submit through a federal system and, and draw down funds when projects submit reimbursement. And we have not had any, um, experienced any delays with the shutdown with that. But the, you know, future funding, um, we're taking that day by day and waiting until this new budget um is passed to see uh what will be in store for future funding.
Okay. All righty. So I guess we'll be in touch then, right?
Yeah, and then Donna will follow up with me once um you guys talk on, on, on your, on your end um to let me know if it's looking like you guys might uh put together an application for those COVID funds. Um, and then again, I'm happy, you know, thank you for inviting um me to come speak today. And if there's ever any other projects or um things that you guys are considering and you want to talk more about C D B G funds, I'd be happy to, to come back to another meeting like this and answer any questions that you might have.
And, and we'll get you that list of the tax credit consultants so you could talk to somebody about your new. I mean, I think what you're doing is great. It's wonderful that you're trying to do something. Unfortunately, the C D B G isn't gonna be able to help you with it. Molly's C D B G, perhaps the C D B G Rochester, Dover, those guys can help you with it. Um, but what you're doing is great and maybe we can get you some tax credit information and see if that will help you out at all. But we appreciate what you're doing all. Um, just unfortunately, this isn't the fit for that in this case. But, but maybe there's something else that would work, so. Keep up what you're doing.
All we can do is try, you know? Try to do something to make a difference. Okay, ladies. Well, thank you so much, Donna. I'll be in touch, you'll be touched, talking to Diana. We'll be in touch. And we'll try to get back to Molly at A S F A, A S I P, okay?
All right, great. Thank you, Molly.
You. Thank you, Molly.
All righty.
Just a couple of observations.
Yep.
If Dover and Rochester are. No, if they're offering resistance about contributions, because they're making their contributions out of their tax dollar. They don't have to. They can make their contributions directly out of C B D G money that's allocated to them.
Right.
So.
Yeah.
Just something, when you appear at the next hearing, George.
Yep.
You could make sure that the, the appropriate city councils are aware of their ability to do that.
Yeah.
Because maybe that's not common knowledge.
Right, right.
Just, that, that's just one observation. The um, second observation, I, I think we also need to, because it is a competitive grant and, and uh, we need to have an understanding or some communication with CAP.
Right.
About, I mean, do.
What they have going on, right?
Right. Is that something we're, we?
Well, I don't wanna, I don't, I, I had mentioned to uh the executive director last night that I didn't want to step on her toes moving forward, but she has going on in Rochester.
That, that's my point. And, and we, we might, we might have the ability to seem more attractive. I don't know what their scoring.
The scoring model, because they, well, they don't know themselves because they haven't come up with.
But, but our scoring would include all of, the entire Stratford County.
Well, I'm sure.
And that might, and that might tip it. And I, I don't wanna do anything to hurt, you know, all the effort that, that CAP's done.
Right. I don't wanna hurt.
And, and the other thing is, just so you know, that she did make a mistake. It's not, that twenty-five thousand dollar grant is not in cooperation with CAP. It's in cooperation with regional planning.
Right, right.
I just wanted to clear that up.
They are granting.
They're, well, yeah, but it's, you know, it's with them.
Right. I get it. Well, there's a lot of pockets. There's a lot of silos here with a lot of different.
I just wanna make sure.
So what I'll do is I'll reach out to, if so, um, as in the meantime, as you're working this out with CAP. And I'll get with them and Donna just because if we're going to do this, it's, we're at the end of October, so. Or do you want to wait for me to contact them? We'll work at the same time.
I have other, okay, I have other suggestions that.
Well, if you talk.
Because it involves personnel, I'd rather do it in non-public.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. All right, we're good with that. All right, we got some upcoming events. We got an employee appreciation dinner tonight. Bell is in at five o'clock. The uh special committee on long-term care in Stratford County meeting for November first has been postponed. Uh, so let everybody know. Uh, that tour with Sullivan County, we had two state reps that were interested in going to look at it. That's it.
Really?
Yeah.
And a third would go if it was more than two.
But, so it's been postponed, it's been postponed to a further date. Uh, I did have a conversation under all the new business, uh, I did have a conversation with the chairman of delegation to discuss uh, to have the next meeting of the long-term care group to discuss financing. And I had stressed to them that the financing of, of, of a new nursing home is really in flux because it depends on the nature of what happens with the feds, with the Medicaid program. We have absolutely no idea what they're doing. Just like they don't have any idea with C D B G, we just don't have any idea. And that's all we look at. So I told them, it'd probably be premature. I mean, we can talk about it, but it's just an exercise in talking because.
Well, and I said that at the first meeting.
It did.
That I can, that the guarantees that we could make them.
Initially.
Initially, when they voted no.
Right.
I can't make them no guarantees. That's not gonna be my legacy where I make them some form of a guarantee. And then we start engaging in the project and, and it falls through.
So, right.
And, and there is absolutely no guarantees that I can make them.
Yeah. Well, we're in such a state of flux. So anyway, do we have any other new business we need to talk about?
I have something. Uh, just a quick thing. I attended the state and county finance committee meeting, of which I'm a member, relatively new member. And a couple of things that I didn't want to mention. Remember the state appropriated six million dollars to hire a vendor to assist them in processing applications for uh Medicaid for people that are going into nursing homes. You know, we're way behind in collecting revenue for people that we're caring for. Because this, the state is down twenty-five percent of, of the staff. And when they, as soon as they hire someone and begin to train them, they immediately take another state job. Uh, because it's a, uh, it, it's a challenging pro, you know, project, which is why I think from what I was told, governor and council are very resistant and not hiring outside contractors to supplement state jobs that state employees should be doing. So we, we might need to, um, they're out with an R S P now. It, it, um, they expect that they'd make some decisions regarding the R S Ps in December. We might need to weigh in to our governor and counselor, uh, uh, Mr. Kenny and, and let him know that we hope that he would support that contract. As long as it's somebody that will help process these Medicaid applications and therefore we get our funding quicker. Uh, as you know, that was part of what we talked about.
Right.
At the delegation meeting uh just last week. And um, we, I just want to be sure. Plus, um, I'm the, the state is also going to be retraining their staff, but again, not until December. Um, so all this is operating off kind of the state's timetable. And I also have some concerns about the direction in which that, that committee is moving. That I'm going to bring up at the Association of Counting's convention. When there's a whole group of us together.
Not to delay, to delay our meeting, but the this six million dollar contract for processing Medicaid. If you think about it, what they could have, what they could have looked at. The state and county finance commission should have probably done this. If I'd have been sitting there, I would, I'd certainly have brought them up. Is that, you know, twenty-five to thirty years ago, we were, we, we came in with a proposal to have the county's act as a gatekeeper for Medicaid applications. You know, if you think about this, this six million dollars, that's six hundred thousand dollars per county. And the smaller counties wouldn't need that kind of money to process Medicaid. The advent use of technology, okay? The counties could go back into the, the gatekeeper rule, which is what we, I had talked about with Terry Morton twenty-five years ago, okay? And have the, because the county's picking up the tab and we were close to the people. We were closer to the, the people. We knew our own people. Just think if they were, they, they gave us as an example, six hundred thousand dollars. Seems to me we could process applications for, for Medicaid within six hundred thousand.
The other piece of that, Mr. Chairman, is when you're twenty-five percent down.
Right.
The way to resolve that is to pay people.
Yeah.
I mean, in, in, I just received and I forwarded it to Diane as a point of interest. The uh expenses for, for pool nursing, which as you know, is hiring outside vendors um to provide nursing services. You know, I have a concern about pool nursing because they don't know our residents. Okay, they come in and, and they might work a night, two nights, five nights over a month. Uh, they don't, uh, I mean, I'm not saying anything bad about what they're doing.
They just, they just don't know.
They don't know. Plus, they don't know how Riverside operates.
Right.
So we've, we will, uh, based on numbers that Diana's given me, we're currently spending about ten thousand dollars a week, fifteen, twelve thousand dollars a week. Rocky M County, who only has a hundred and twenty-seven residents. And they're the same size as us. I mean, licensed the same as us. Um, and we're at a hundred and seventy.
Why is their census so low?
My experience uh is that they're very selective about who they admit. Um, and, and my.
Pushing the cost up.
My directive from the commissioners is to take, is that the county is the home of last resort. So we take everyone. Um, the only, the only people that we take as spaces available, boy, is that a, you might step in it when I said that, is um our people that are like in excess of five or six hundred pounds. I can only take one per unit because sometimes it takes four aides to provide care. Um, and that's all I have working on, on some shifts. Um, so, you know, and, and space becomes difficult in fitting through doors and things. These are things we were going to work on in a new facility um so that we could.
Yeah, you can't physically get them through the building. That, that's, that's the bottom line.
That's the bottom line. And, and, and that's things we were going.
You can't get them on the toilet. You can't, the, the doors aren't wide enough. I mean, they're, they're a little bit.
So in, in any case, um, we're, we're talking about, um, I, I think they're selective about who they admit. At least that was my experience when I covered for them.
Yeah, they spend three times as much, or five times as much as we have with pools.
Over, over three million. Um, and every, every nursing home, even the smaller nursing homes, you know, in the northern part of the state or wherever, are spending at least twice what we're spending uh for, you know, for pools and staff. And, and the only reason I'm saying that is it comes down to paying people.
Right.
If you pay people a fair wage, then you don't. If you pay people a fair wage, then you don't need to rely on, uh, nursing pools that cost twice as much per hour as we pay our own people.
Yeah.
Uh, so that, I mean, I think that, that the commissioners made some great allowances that were supported by the delegation, uh, except for Peter. No, there were, we're, I'm just kidding. Just kidding. That were supported by the delegation and, and that has benefited us in terms of managing those, those costs. Just common sense to do it the way you're doing. I mean, really. And a- also it enhances quality of care because they're caring for these people every day as opposed to stopping in and not needing, knowing what these people look like, except their picture comes up on the computer as they're passing out meds. And they don't know if somebody's acting differently. Fortunately, we have a core group of supervisors who can be summoned to the unit and will understand if, if some, if somebody's, if this is within the norm or not. Um, so anyway, I think that that's, um, you know, that's a consideration. Is, is this a state? If the counties ran it instead of the state, we could pay the people the appropriate sum of money and they would stay in place.
Right.
Whereas I think the state's bound by labor contracts and, and, uh, a tremendously challenging bureaucracy of hiring. And I was told by Henry Lippman that there are twenty-five percent of vacant positions, and they have like nobody with experience, because as soon as they become experienced, they apply for a different state job, which is their right to do.
Right.
But, you know, isn't something that we've been able to make adjustments in the wage scales. Um, and, and, and the superintendent bracket would know that better than anybody. I mean, it was a constant drain from his place to community corrections, which you all since corrected in, in the last budget. So, you know, that equalized that. In fact, we've got people back and forth now. Instead of people just leaving, you know, it's, it's back and forth, so. You know, that, that's part of the concern that I saw at this meeting, plus I'm concerned about, it's people discussing the financial obligations on the counties, understanding that this is a state problem. This, this is the state's responsibility. It isn't ours. And it's bad enough that we pay twenty-five percent of our taxes go towards the support of this. You know, twenty-five percent of what we raise in taxes goes with no revenue offset, goes directly to pay the, our share of, of long-term care services. And, and to commit more of that, especially where there's no ability to offset it with any form of revenue. Um, it's, it's a concern.
Yeah, well, that's something the county commissioners need to be talking about.
I agree a hundred percent.
Not only here in this county, but statewide.
Well, that's why I'm hoping it can be, uh, addressed at the convention when everybody's together.
Yeah. Well, certainly, as president of all the county commissioners, I'll, I'll put it on the agenda for all the commissioners to discuss. You know, this is, you've been having this discussion for twenty-five years. This is nothing new. It's just a matter of how it's, how it's, who's going to pay for it and how, how it's going to get done, and the state has been struggling with this.
The, the difference in this case, though, is we're, when, when we need as the state and county finance, if the people from the county are endorsing a, a more active financial participation amongst the counties.
Right.
And then when the legislature, as they did in this case, we had a two percent cap.
Right.
And, and they bumped it to three. And we, on the other end, county officials argue with the state.
Right.
About the adjustment.
Well, the adjustment.
When the state and county finance committee is talking about putting more money, more county money into it. So we're like arguing against ourselves and, and that's, that makes us look foolish. And, and I brought that up and, and.
Glad you did.
Well, perhaps I wasn't as forceful. It was my first meeting. So I, you know, I, I didn't want to get banned from the process, but, you know? Because I, I, um, yeah, it's my first meeting. I didn't want to get banned from the process.
Well, I appreciate the fact that you took my place there. I coached you at that commission for twenty-five years, and I can tell you that, uh, none of this is, none of this is.
No, but we, we can't be fighting against each other.
We can't fight against each other. We better have some kind of cohesive idea.
Well, because somebody at some point is going to say.
Yeah. Right, right. Well, it sounds like Castle of Color. You're not going there, right? Okay, any other new business or old business?
Well, I do have that document for you to sign, Charlotte.
Charlotte, you're going to get it.
As a clerk, that's for the twenty-five thousand dollar of CDBG grants.
That just authorizes me. Sign that grant.
And Leslie, I do have some documents for you to sign. New commissioner, congratulations.
Yeah, we'll do that upstairs.
And George, I just had need, this is something, can you initial and date it October ninth?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I thought by Emily doing, I don't know where Emily initialed in the. Yeah, if you could do that as well. I thought by Emily doing that document, it was fine, but.
There you go. Who's pen? Leslie's? Okay, she has an intention of motion to go into non-public session for the purpose of discussing personnel and contract negotiations. Get a motion.
And hand out security issues.
Oh, it's security issues, right. The Commissioner Thlesiano, second by Commissioner Levitt, it's a prize role called Commissioner Levitt. No, but we've already, we've already made it, and you just, you just need to vote yes and no to go into executive session. Yes, okay, and myself, yes, okay. Commissioner Levitt, I have it on.